And now you're ready.
Okay. I call this meeting of the Subcommittee to Order. I have the time as 12:39 PM on Friday, May 8th, 2020. Staff?
Yes. Just very quick, why don't, um, I'll do the, uh, the little preamble here. Just to let everyone know that the Development Review or Development Regulation Subcommittee is meeting today through the Microsoft Teams platform, um, in accordance and pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 from March 23rd, 2020, uh, which authorizes the public body to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Uh, there is no location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, but the, uh, the meeting is being held through the Teams with public access provided to the meeting by phone or with potential access by video. Public act, uh, public notice was provided of the, of the meeting and a mechanism has been provided to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access by emailing planning@lebanonnh.gov, uh, or if you happen to be on the chat or on the Teams platform through the chat function. When you do a quick roll call. And just to make sure everybody's present and then as, as before, all meeting, all votes taken during the meeting will be done by roll call vote also. Okay, so I'll do the roll call vote, or do you want, do you want to do that, Matt, or do you want me to do that?
No, David, you, no, you're on a roll, go ahead.
I'm on a roll. Matt Hall, are you present?
I am present and if it matters, I'm alone.
Okay. Joan Monroe?
Present and alone.
Tom Martz?
Present and alone.
Kathy Romano? Not yet, I don't see her, but I will, I'll, uh, I'll mute myself and try to get her a call and I'll let Rebecca take it over from here.
Okay. Let's see here, so. Following the last meeting, um, staff met about some of the questions and I think we will continue to tackle them and maybe bring some of them to the full planning board, but specifically, um, David, Tim and I met on, um, well, earlier this week to go over some of the interpretation, the must, shall, should pieces and also on the what triggers site plan review, so the jurisdiction pieces and, um, made some headway, um, mostly saying that must and shall mean the same thing, um, and that, that would be in Section 1.3, um, under interpretation as a, a new paragraph instead of having them as separate definitions in the definition section, as well as what should means and should not, and, um, we think that that is clear, we've looked at other regulations, there are, you know, some Supreme Court cases even on that type of terminology and we feel it's consistent, the main thing is that you define it in your regulations upfront. So, um, if everyone's comfortable with that, the, um, main thing as we continue to go through the amended content would be to ask yourself, um, are there any times with the existing language or new language where you feel that a must should be a should or vice versa? Because as we discussed, some of the existing content, maybe at the time said should or something else semi-optional, but that could have been 10 years ago and at the time it was a best practice but not required, maybe it's something you want required now. These are intended to, um, be informative when you say should sometimes, like low impact development, we really want it and everything, but we can't require it as a minimum standard all of the time. So, and we, we did a word count of how many musts and shoulds and shalls there were in the document, there. Shall. Or not. In that regard, and as Joan discussed at the last meeting, um, I think Tom heard this part, um, there's also the option to ask for a waiver and if that, that question's probably going to come up, um, again, as you come through some of the other new content, um, so let's just consider, um, that moving forward. So without dwelling on that anymore, um, the other piece is the jurisdiction and Tim is going to start looking at how we can streamline what planning board reviews when there are more, um, small scale, not small scale footprint, but small scale like, um, an addition, but not a lot of other improvement. Is it a minor site plan review process? Hmm? Pardon me?
Oh, I was, I was about to, to give you a suggestion and then your image froze.
Oh, okay.
All I was gonna say was, you were saying about streamline small things and I was thinking boundary line adjustments, but, um, sometimes boundary line adjustments are kind of critical and other times there's like nothing around them and it's a person splitting off a little bit of land to give to the, you know, to sell to the neighbor. So there's sort of no big deal boundary lines and then there are.
Right. Well, I don't want to get too in the weeds with it, but, um, there are precedents for how to do that, the National Regional Planning Commission has a whole model ordinance, basically for the steps to establish a, um, committee that does those reviews on behalf of the planning board. So, when we go through these things, just try to consider what a full site plan review for a, um, you know, good sized project would be required and then we'll figure out the minor and major later on. Does that sound good to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So, in terms of what page we're on, I need to share my screen, uh, let me do that. And that sometimes takes a minute to show, so I'll, um, be counting on all of you to tell me, Matt, do you see it?
Not yet.
You probably see the video, so do you see the, the site plan now?
Not yet.
No?
Not yet, nope.
Okay. When, when it appears on your screen, it should.
Okay, here we are.
Okay. Okay. And Tom?
Yep.
Okay. And Matt?
Not yet.
Okay. Uh, give it a minute.
Just to jump in, um, I talked to Kathy, she's gonna, there was some miscommunication, uh, yesterday, so she's gonna be getting home and will dial in to join us shortly.
Okay. Well, good thing we have a recording. Matt, do you see it now?
Nope.
No? So two out of three can see the, um, shared screen, David. Can you see it?
6.2.
Yeah.
Oh, I see it now.
Okay. Okay. So, um, what we've been doing, uh, as at the last meeting, if that works for you, is I've been taking notes on what you say as we go, um, in the, in the side and we'll try to address these things, um, and then actually make in-text changes where it makes sense to right now. So, I think that we left off on the landscaping standards for 6.2 and the reason why, um, as we looked at the Walmart example, um, this matters is because a lot of landscaping can be used as a multi-function, um, design element to help with pedestrian needs in particular. Um, so, I'm just gonna scroll down to where we actually have some of the changes, but we, for example, the last time added differentiation between the, um, Lebanon downtown district and the, what's now the West Lebanon Central Business District, so scrolling down more to where the changes are. We did get through some of it. Matt, we had had an email just about what placemaking is, I don't know if that, um, was something you wanted to get into a bit more, but.
It was very helpful.
And, you know, I, I would be happy to share it with everyone else, it was just something that, um, right after that meeting I dove into a little bit. Do you think that's something that you, is worth sharing more broadly?
Sure. I mean, I think, I think anything definitionally can always be helpful for, for people, I mean, certainly it's helpful for me.
Okay. So. One, so it sounds like the bottom line is we want a more of a definition of what it is.
Well, I'm sorry, I, I thought you meant just like for sharing among like.
Okay. Okay. Then I'll write, I'll write that down. Okay. That makes sense. Um, so then getting into the, the landscaping of parking areas, um, this is where we left off specifically and this is where there are some more quantitative, um, or scale-related requirements that have been suggested as amendments. So, right now, based on the size of the parking area, you have requirements for where there are landscaped islands. What the suggested amendments do is to, um, further limit what the unbroken rows of parking are, um, with more frequent curbing and landscaping that can also be used for lighting, snow storage or dedicated pedestrian aisles, if you see where my mouse is through the parking lot. So again, emphasizing these are not useless areas for development, they, they should be maximized, uh, land uses, um, every square foot is valuable and should be used that way. Um, one, um, where I've seen in another community is that they limit the unbroken rows to 100 feet. So in some of these developments, you're seeing there's still parking out front, um, between the roadway and the, the building or, or in the shopping center areas and you get a complete, um, island of pavement and this, this limits that, so, um, and the main purpose is not necessarily the landscaping and visual effect, although it benefits the shading goals that are already in here, the, the main purpose is to, um, have more potential areas for pedestrians to go around parked vehicles as they're backing up safely. So this is a little bit specific and technical, do you want me to read through each one?
What do other board members think? I just reviewed it pretty quickly myself.
I have to admit, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, Joan.
All I was gonna say is, I have to admit, I wasn't sure, um, what we were going to do today, I wasn't sure if, if we were gonna be looking at changes to what we talked about last time, so.
Oh, I see.
It's okay.
We can go through it then.
Okay. So. If we go through numbers one through three, um, assuming everyone can still see my screen here, um, the, the first one is to limit unbroken rows of parking to a maximum of 100 feet in length and then you'd have to have a landscaped area between, um, each of those 100 feet and that would not include the curbing, um, and then that area would accommodate, um, utilities or snow storage or help be a pedestrian aisle through the, the parking lot. So if you have 100 feet, that's about 10 spaces in general. The next one, so, go ahead.
My only question is, um, is the 100 feet like an industry standard at this point?
Well, that's what I have seen, when you say industry standard, um. The industry standard now is to break large parking lots into smaller modules.
Yeah.
So you could almost cut and paste 10 small modules that look the same to create a patchwork of parking instead of having one monolithic parking area. It's, it's more about what each module contains, each module should contain some landscaping, some pedestrian connectivity and the large, more parking spaces you provide, the more of the modules you need.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question about, um, to one, um, where it says eight by eight exclusive of curbing and then it said the required area can be, can be designed to include blah, 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 um, stormwater management, so. So this is, is that written in such a way that it, that it's clear to people, like, when they would need to put curbing there and when they wouldn't need to put curbing there?
So what it means is the dimension, the eight by eight feet would not be able to include curbing, it's not about, um, when you actually need the curbing or not, that is spelled out in the actual, um, just elsewhere in the standards.
Okay. Okay.
Um, okay. So, that's basically the smallest scale change, the, then we go up in scale, so say you're a larger parking lot where you have three or more rows of parking that are each 100 feet long, um, in addition to having the typical landscape parking around the, the perimeter, I mean landscaping around the perimeter, um, there need to be landscape islands placed between each double row of parking spaces, um, and those need to have enough room to actually support the plantings and this one is, could probably be reworded a bit, um, but the main idea is to have enough space for the trees to grow in addition to if you're going to have pedestrian aisles, because a lot of, um, parking lot landscaping, we discussed a little bit the last time, um, doesn't survive and that's because sometimes they even will pave and then plant and the roots have nowhere to go. So, this is not directly pedestrian related here, but it was something that, um, I've, again, seen, um, and when I was looking for examples of pedestrian connectivity, kind of adapted it for this.
My two cents with both one and two is I, I, I think they're, they sound good and I, I think that if a developer wants to request a waiver from them for legitimate reasons, then they can present them to the board and the board can consider it, so I think they're, I think, I like them as they are.
Um, Joan here, I agree.
And Tom, do you?
Well, I was just wondering whether we all needed to respond, I think it sounds fine also, I'm, I'm having a little bit of trouble dis, uh, discerning the, uh, the discussion about the eight, eight feet for, um, two rows or two, let's see, where do I find that?
So, so say you have, right, for, I'm gonna highlight this area, so these landscaped islands shall have a minimum of eight feet. So, say you have, um, two double rows of parking, you'd have to have a strip of landscaped area that's at least eight feet wide. You couldn't just keep having double rows of parking spaces alongside each other in a parking lot that has three or more rows of parking.
Right. I guess Rebecca, what I'm having a hard time understanding here, visualizing is the, is what that would look like, do you have anything that has a picture of what exactly you're describing?
Yeah. I think that's one I'll have to come back to and, and I think graphics would support a lot of this more readily.
I was gonna say, the, the reason that I'm having trouble saying this, if I think of the parking area that's over there by TJ Maxx and, uh, you know, uh, bookstore, I forget which one's over there, uh, Books2Million and et cetera, uh, they have landscaping islands where you can't necessarily drive through from one side to the other side, but there are some parking lots where you could, uh, drive in on one side and go all the way through to the next parking space so that you're parking facing out of the parking place and into the next flow of traffic. So I'm trying to visualize if that's what we're talking about or if we're talking about, um, I, I just, I'm having a hard time visualizing it, I guess.
Yeah, I think so and because I don't know that parking lot as well, I'm trying to pull it up here.
Joan here. The, at, in front of TJ Maxx, which is my home away from home, um, there, there is a landscaped island, so you come into the parking lot and you're in the front of the stores and to the left of you are drive-in spaces and that's where there's a vegetated strip, so you either make the choice of parking in one of those first vegetated, you know, with your front end of your car against the vegetated strip, or you have to drive around to the next aisle and then you can pull in from the other side and then.
Yes. This, this is it.
I can't honestly remember any other vegetated strips in that parking lot.
So, can you see my screen right now or do I have to switch out of, um, you still see the standards?
Right.
Okay, let me share the, um, this, okay, so you should see the TJ Maxx parking lot in a second.
Okay, so it's two rows, it's two rows that have the vegetated and then it goes to just the, your eight foot wide.
Right.
Right.
So otherwise, you, you get, um, you might get something more like this everywhere where maybe it's capped by landscaping, but it's still a pretty big solid area versus this, which is a newer development, that part.
Which is the way it is in front of, uh, the Kmart, it's just aisle after aisle after, you know, row after row after row of the double, double-headed drive-through if you want.
Well, how do I get back from there? Yeah. Right. So there's Kmart. Um, does that help? So I think that was a good example, Tom.
Well, 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 let me ask you this, so, so what you're explaining is more like the front area there with, by the, uh, by the TJ Maxx.
Yes.
As opposed to what we're seeing in the middle of it, yeah, I think that makes sense. Now, I do have to tell you that my, my, fortunately she's not here right now, my wife likes the idea of being able to drive in one side and pulling through so that you can drive straight out, I've seen a lot of people back into each other, you know, where you're limited to only being able to back up and so she likes to avoid that kind of.
Yeah. She must go when it's not busy then.
And, and backup cameras are a wonderful invention, but it takes a little while to get used to them.
Yeah.
So, um, so I think we're, I think we're good, good to move to the next part, right?
Let me, I have to share the other screen again.
Someone tell me what, what section we're on, please.
Oh, hey Kathy.
Hi Kathy, sorry, I didn't see you join here, we, we are on, um, the landscaping under, oh my, um, 6.2 and then we're down under, um.
Landscaping of parking areas.
Yeah. Landscaping of parking area, oh, E rather. Can you see my screen, Kathy?
Yes.
I, Rebecca?
Yeah.
Because I'm on this, this tablet and the screen for me is small, cause I usually use a Mac.
Oh, I need to make it bigger, okay. I forgot about that.
I, I keep half of it on basically my copy of the, um, you know, of the regs. Yeah. Yeah, it's better now.
I need it smaller so I can write in it, but, um, can you see it now?
I'm, just to, I'm in the wrong 6.2 obviously, so what's, we're not under subdivision, what are we under?
Oh.
We're in site plan regulations under landscaping of parking areas.
Rebecca, do you mind? Do you, um, while, while Kathy finds that, do you want to start talking about number three?
Yeah. So, um, number three, so say, say in the number two, um, there's three or more rows, so if each row has like 10, um, spaces in it and it's a double row, so 20, that, that might be like 60 spaces or more. Number three takes it to an even bigger parking area containing, um, at least 150 spaces and in that case, um, the requirement is to break the parking lot into, like I was saying, the modules, the studios of smaller lots where each one has a landscaped buffer between it and that has to. Why? Amendment to the building entrance.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
You, you were freezing for a second, but that, maybe that was just me.
Uh, I don't know, do you want me to repeat that?
No, I think, no, it makes sense to me, I mean, my comment is, I, I, again, I think three sounds good, I think that one, two, I, I think anything in this section for big developments on like 12A for example that we might see, or maybe for the hospital for future developments, um, we might be getting a lot of, um, waiver requests for these, but I think that's fine, um, so I, I think they're all fine as written, um, or at least they think they're fine to bring to the, the whole board and see what the whole board thinks.
Joan here, I, I totally agree with, with, uh, Matt and on number three, I think where it says, um, meet the requirements and divide parking lots into a series of smaller lots effectively, I think that comment says what you said a, a minute or two ago about how you take like the smallest basic plan and then you just duplicate it, you just, you know, kind of go down the width of the parking lot doing, repeating it. And so I think this one is fine as well.
There, there are essential elements that should go into any parking lot, including pedestrian connectivity, landscaping, um, signage, snow storage, et cetera. And you can obviously adapt it, but that, 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 if that helps, I'm glad.
And, and then Joan again, the one that's at Home Depot, those two wide islands, I mean those two wide strips that they have going through the parking lot, um, starting at the store and then going away from the store, those were supposed to be, uh, water infiltration gardens and over the years they became, uh, filled with mulch and the mulch just got thicker and thicker and more and more and so I doubt that they're functioning very well as what they were supposed to be. But that would also have been where, and they told us when they did that, they said if there's ever a place where we have good infill, where infiltrating the parking lot water would be, this is, got perfect soil for doing that. But then the builder is long gone and the developer is long gone and they, current people have filled it in and, um, but that's another use of that, I mean, that wide strip would be attractive.
So, um, going back up to number one, um.
Right.
That, that statement really should apply to any of them.
Right. Stormwater management features, yes.
Well, great, well, I think we're probably, we have enough here to move to, bring it to the board.
So, um, and then later down, um, we already had the, um, shall incorporate low impact design features to the maximum extent practicable, so we, we have shall, but it's also basically a should by saying that. So then going down, um, for G, this is a new section suggested, um, this is similar to, I'm, I'm gonna jump to number two first, so that's a quick one, number two comes.
Excuse me a minute, have you, excuse me, Kathy, have you caught up with us?
I'm just wondering. What percentage of parking will be eliminated? By putting the extra landscape buffers in?
And, and if I may, may add, um, that would be a question for the developer to decide. It's up to them whether they want to get a waiver and how much they think they need and then it's up to us to say whatever we say, um, but you've, you've, my question was you. whatever we say. Um, but you've, you've, my question was, you found where we are, so you're, you're following along.
Can I just jump in on that real quick, and the idea of the waiver? Just to be cautious, there's, uh, there's a section in, I believe it's Article 7 of the Site Plan Regulations that says waivers shall not be considered to, oh, wait a second, I'm sorry, let me get this in front of me before I misspeak.
David, can I say something while you're finding it?
Yes.
Um, well, two things, we're talking for the most part about new projects, so wouldn't be eliminating, it would be likely planning, where the parking is a bit more strategically and/or under buildings, and then, um, going back to the multi-function aspect of what landscaping, um, can and should be with lighting, snow storage, pedestrian aisles, utilities, a lot of those things are already requirements to be fit and to use land somewhere on the site. So it's more about matching up where all those functions can use the same part of the land, um, more efficiently.
So, and just for commercial, or is this?
This is.
Everything?
Um, well, this, some of the requirements are based on the number of spaces. So we, if, if it's having, going to have more than 150 spaces, that's when the requirement is triggered. It, it, for the most part, we have commercial projects like that, but as you've seen with several recent multifamily projects, they have that many spaces.
Yeah, so, go ahead, David.
Yeah, this, I mean, Section 72A of the Site Plan Regulations already says waivers from landscaping requirements shall not be considered in cases where adequate parking areas cannot be provided due to landscaping requirements. In such cases, the development shall be scaled down so that landscaping requirements can be met. My thought is that, is, or, or what I want this committee to be aware of and, and think about, is that if putting, i- if adding more landscaping in these strips in the middle of the parking lot, which I really like, and I think is kind of a good idea in general, if that ends up spreading the parking farther apart to the point where now all of a sudden, the, the, uh, the parking cannot all fit, for example, on a, on a given piece of property, then we're sort of forcing them to do a smaller building. Again, that's, it's not necessarily the wrong thing or a bad thing, but it's, but it may be different than what is the case today without that requirement.
David, this is Matt. I mean, I, see, I, I've never quite understood that, that require, that, that regulation myself, the one you just quoted. Um, because I think there should be, I mean, you could argue there could be a whole lot of things that should be in that category of, we're, you know, we're not going to let you request a waiver from this or that, but I think it's peculiar that landscaping seems to be singled out. I almost think we should, this subcommittee should have a conversation about that provision itself.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I just don't want to, to start creating requirements and then get into a situ-
Yeah.
With the understanding that, well, if it doesn't work, they can just request a waiver, but we have this other section that says, yeah, you're, they're really not supposed to request a waiver in that instance.
Yeah.
And we also have the, oh, go ahead, Matt.
I was just gonna say, maybe, maybe we should, for this section, table it for now, and maybe have a conversation about
Yeah.
that regulation that David just quoted later on, and.
Okay, I'm putting that.
Well, let me just chime in before you do, because I see a really big difference between a parking lot for Kohl's or Walmart or Home Depot and a residential condo parking lot. Sometimes where you live, you want it to be landscaped and beautiful, and your car might stay there all day, whereas when you go shopping, you're there for a half an hour. The snowplows come through like, like a plow train and clear it out, and, and hundreds of people are driving through aisles looking for parking places, though that if you reduce them, especially in the winter, it's difficult. So I don't necessarily think that the same requirements should apply for residential as commercial. I agree with Joan's mother that I always choose to park someplace where I can possibly head straight out if there's not a car in front of me, rather than backing up.
This, this is Matt again. I mean, I, I still think that this is why waivers are effective and waivers are good, so that if a particular developer thinks their circumstance will be better without it, um, I think that that's very effective. And I, and it hadn't even struck me as something to talk about, but I, I have always wondered about that one section, the one, again, the one that David quoted. But I also don't want to still just, just spend this whole meeting today just on this one section.
And, um, while I, I don't want to either, um, instead, can I suggest that offline, if you each can make a note, and we, we can spend time later, but offline, or you can do a site visit to look up the parking lot at Hypertherm on Heater Road?
Yeah.
Good example. Because, because that's like a new one, and it's, it's almost, it's almost like state-of-the-art. Um, I was also wanting to point out that I have noticed in, under 6.6, which is technically stormwater management, um, there is a little subdivision, I mean, a little sub heading under I that says waivers, so that's, that's a waiver section talking specifically about stormwater management, so. It's stuff for me to look at that I'd forgotten about.
Okay.
I think we need to be careful, though, because when we make requirements, then they're requirements, and if someone asks for a waiver, the board could not grant the waiver, and they would have to meet the requirements. So we ought not to have unintended consequences by making requirements for things that don't seem necessary. There's no guarantee that someone could get out of them.
Come on, okay, I think we noted that, um, I have one question, David, what was that, sections?
Uh, 7.2, 7.2A.
Okay. Um, the other thing I was going to say is, just take a quick step back, one of the reasons as friendly as they can be, and at some point, every driver is a Lebanon, and.
You're fading in and out, Rebecca.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can, but I didn't hear what you said before.
One of the reasons we are doing these amendments is to make Lebanon more pedestrian-friendly. At some point, every driver is a pedestrian. We have done the latest, um, number crunching, and the greatest number of vehicle and pedestrian conflicts continues to be in parking lots. That's the highest number of police reports in the city. And the only way we can potentially influence that is through design. So while it is nice and convenient to be able to pull through one row of parking to another, we're not necessarily considering the safety, let alone the convenience for when that driver becomes a pedestrian, just to get to the door of a building. So, um, can everyone see my screen still for the next section?
For G?
Yes.
Okay.
So for G, I'm going to skip to number two first. Number two is, um, basically the same wording that came from the new, um, downtown district, where we're trying to encourage, all these things still need to go in most developments, um, but we're trying to encourage them to not be in the front yard, because ideally, that's the area where you have your, um, pedestrian way to get into the building, you want it to be visually pleasing. They don't have to go in the, the front. So that's, that's a best practice that you see almost universally in, um, site plan updates now. Are we okay with number two?
I understand that from a point of view of new construction, is that what we're talking about? But when you go to rehab an, an existing house, the utility will tell you, this is where the pole is, this is where, you know, it's even, who wants it on the front of the house? But they'll say, this is where it's got to go. Comcast does that, Liberty doesn't.
Yes, uh, David, we can hear, or someone.
I think it's David.
Yeah.
Am I typing? Sorry. I'm typing, uh, the minutes here, so, as we speak.
Sounds like you're breathing heavily.
It's, it sounds like you're whispering.
I'm reading them as I type them, and I'm sort of.
That's not a lot.
I'll mute, I'll mute myself.
That's in Section 6.4.
Sorry, go ahead, Joan.
No, I was just kidding.
So what I, what I was saying is, if it says they shall not be located in the front yard, but the utility company says, well, that's where we're connecting them, then what do you do?
I'm, I think that that is something we often come across, and that's when you, you have to defer to what their requirement is. Sometimes there's back and forth, but, um, if we say should, then that's one of the, you, you missed the first part, um, Kathy, but, um, this is one of those points where do you want it to be a should or shall? If there is leeway, if the utility says that it has to be there, we're not going to change where, um.
It's kind of an if possible. Or, you know, like, I don't know. So is, is shall the least stringent?
So, this is Matt. I still think that this is a case where a waiver would be perfectly fine, because again, if they come, if they say, hey, we, we really can't move this, or it's going to be a significant cost, or, um, a significant hardship for our, our project to move the utility box from the front yard to, you know, this far back in the side. I think that's something that's perfectly easy to be done with a waiver, in my opinion, in my opinion. I, I, I think, um, I could see, I, I, that, that's my thought. Uh, Joan or Tom, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, I guess, Matt, the, the thing that I think about is that if the utility companies tell somebody that they can't move them, uh, it's either up to the city to stand behind the owner and talk the utility companies into moving it, or else we have to grant a, you know, a, an exception to it for them. And, and I think that, you know, that's a legitimate reason why somebody could come to us for, uh, you know, for something that would relieve them of that, but you know, that, that's the only thing I can think of. I think that the rule looks fine, I think it makes sense. And if somebody's doing a rehab, then, and they run into that situation, that's a legitimate reason to have us, uh, grant, you know, exemption from it.
So then you would write your own waiver request, because I'm not sure that's one of the ones on the waiver sheet, is it, David?
It would be part of the landscaping waivers.
Um.
I don't, you know, again, as, as a fairly novice developer, I'm not sure I would think of that as landscaping, but.
Well, the, I mean, the, the waiver that I referenced earlier has to do with i- if you can't provide enough parking because of landscaping requirements. Here, we're not necessarily talking about parking anymore, we're in 62D, or E, I forget. So I don't, I think this could be something that the board could consider a waiver on, irrespective of what 72A says.
Joan, do you have any thoughts?
Well, um, my mind was focusing on the utility boxes, those things that, you know, they put on, on your house, and that's where they read the meter.
Yeah, yeah, that's different.
As I'm looking at it, you know, like service areas, equipment, storage, it, I see that it can get bigger. You know, like equipment storage can be like the size of a table, a dining room table.
And things like that, where it's not a problem. I was focusing just on, you know, your, the boxes that are attached to the house.
These are not, um, this, we're talking about the front yard, like, what's actually, um, a ground-mounted system.
Oh, like, eh, like, eh, yeah, I know what you mean, yeah, yeah.
And I read utility boxes, and I was thinking electric and Comcast and telephone and things like that, which, which is what you think of when you, when you hear utility.
But change, we, we can't change where the power.
Uh-oh, we, we lost you, or at least I did.
Yeah, I did too.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm, as I read those other things, I mean, I'm trying to think how we do them now. I mean, like, yeah, the utility box we do, it's usually in the front, and you can usually plant something there, or, you know, there's a lot of little things you can do that don't cost that much to hide it, but we still see it, but I mean, they still get to it. But like fuel storage, I can't imagine somebody putting their fuel tank in their front yard, or the waste enclosures, I mean, usually those things are located in such a way that the vehicles can get to them.
Well, we, we do have a few examples, but the, of construction, no.
Did, did you say?
They're not new. They're, um. What?
I lost a lot. I lost a lot of what you said, Rebecca. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we got a bad connection there.
You said anything. Uh, let me move where I am.
I think, uh, I think what, I think what, uh, Rebecca was saying is that there are some examples where because of an existing building, or a pre-existing building, propane tanks or utility, you know, fuel tanks had to be located, uh, in the, in a front yard, uh, or in an area that was not where we'd ideally like to see it, um, but there was no other location that could comply with fire code and, and building code requirements in those, in those instances, so.
And I wasn't referring to any kind of ugly dumpsters or fuel tanks in the front yard, or to new construction. I was just trying to point out that in existing homes, sometimes the utilities were located right in the front of the house, and they will not change them.
Well, we, when I think about it, we.
As long as you can get a waiver, and, and the, and the board would, you know, I mean, because you don't have a choice, I mean, you have to, you want to connect, you have to connect where they're going to do it.
And they're the only human town.
Most existing homes don't undergo site plan review unless they have some other, um, project as part of them. Like they've, they've been asking for a variance or something, so this would be not a relatively small number of places where they would ever have to ask for a waiver, I, I think.
Well, converting a, a single-family home to a multifamily home, I know David had said at some point in time, there were some thoughts about not making them undergo a site plan review, but right now, you still have to.
Joan here, I was thinking that I can think of lots of examples of, well, not lots, but examples of all these different things, and usually they're put inside a fence, you know, like a not-seethrough fence, or they're put in, you know, they're, they're.
So.
Tamed in some way.
Hey Rebecca, this is Matt.
Yes.
I was gonna say, for the interest of time, I, I think we have a sense of the board's thoughts on this, this proviso and, and perhaps, or sorry, the subcommittee's thoughts, and maybe some, some hesitations here. I think we can maybe think on this one, and, um, again, I think maybe the full board can, can think about this one in particular.
Okay. Uh, going back up to number one, then, um, this is where we're talking about land use to some degree, so um, when a multifamily or commercial-use property, not a smaller residential property, when they provide a front yard that is greater or additional to the minimum required front yard setback, or the project is adjacent to, uh, public pedestrian facilities, the yard, um, must be compatible or, um, enhanced, you have the exact wording right there. The yard in adjacent public space must foster a safe and inviting pedestrian environment and provide streetscape enhancements. So basically, it's saying, if you're going to have a yard that's even greater than what the minimum front yard setback is, and you're a larger multifamily or commercial project, to, um, a larger multifamily or commercial project, to, um, have more of a streetscaping, inviting um, space for pedestrians.
Rebecca, this is Matt. So I, I like this one in its spirit. The only question I have is the third line, where it says, the project abuts existing or planned public pedestrian facilities. So, so two issues here for me. Does public pedestrian facilities mean sidewalk? Or could that mean like rail trail? Or I mean, how do you, how do you define?
Yes, so that's why it was written that way, correct?
Okay. Then the thing I would just say is I, the only thing that would concern me slightly is, um, planned, planned public pedestrian facilities. Cause for example, like, uh, you know, that could, I mean, what, what, could one, I guess I would be interested to see how the city would think about planned. So for example, like I know there's a whole bunch of streetscape improvements for downtown Lebanon that are planned and like mechanic streets planned to get updated, but those could all happen in 10 or 20 years. Um, that's the only, I, the only thing I was thinking about was, um, I, I wouldn't want to make a developer have to, I mean, again, these, I know this, none of this would cost a, a great deal, but I would, I wouldn't want a developer to, to tell a developer, hey, we think something's gonna happen here. We don't know when it's going to happen, but we think it's going to happen. And because of that, you need to, um, you know, do this extra landscaping. I, 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 it's a small point, but I just, I wanted to, to voice it.
Yeah, that's an interesting one. And you, you made me think of something else, which is maybe it's not the, asking them to do extra, but maybe it's more that we don't necessarily want to see, like for mechanic street, um, a ton of landscaping. They may have had the best intention, but maybe they put in all kinds of walls and landscaping that cut off the possibility to connect to the public pedestrian facility. So I, I think the intent needs to be clarified. That, that's a good point.
We faced.
So, let, this is Tom. Yeah. Let me jump in for just a second on this because, uh, Matt, to your point, I, I understand what you're saying, but in most cases, it looks like there's going to be already an existing sidewalk or, or method by which somebody's, you know, going to be walking or riding a bike or whatever, uh, in an area. And so it doesn't really matter if there's something additionally planned in the future. Uh, it seems to me if somebody's got that kind of expanse of land between where their development is and where the sidewalk is, well, where. I, I guess I'm having a hard time except out in the country, trying to see where something isn't already going to have some type of need to have, ensure that there is landscaping that looks good, no matter how far the house or the housing development is, or commercial property is set back from this street.
No, Tom, I think that's a decent point. I think mine was more just kinda nitpicking to, at, at the thinking, but I think, I think you're, I think yours is a good point that probably practically this wouldn't really impact anything.
Right.
Do you remember when we dealt with the renovation of the tackle partners property on Spencer Street and we addressed the fact that they didn't have to put a sidewalk in because the city was, you know, that. The city was planning to have a sidewalk there eventually. And so what we required from them in terms of landscaping on the front. Understood that there would eventually be a sidewalk there, even though it wouldn't necessarily be part of this development. And then we had the, the smaller apartment complex down on Mechanic Street where we were talking about the cities, actually right now, extending the sidewalks there and, and that they should not do any walls or make sure they did their driveway cuts, understanding that that sidewalk was coming, you know, that the city was doing that sidewalk. That's, that was probably, that would fit into the planned public pedestrian facilities, you know, where the city was, has a plan to extend the sidewalks.
Yeah. No, I think that's right, Kathy.
So maybe there's a better way to word this, but i- i- it does have a potential impact that would help with projects like what Kathy just said.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I think, I think, um, I think, uh, I think, I, I, I think Tom convinced me. I think we're probably okay.
I turned my mic off, but I'm laughing, Matt. Thanks.
Okay. And I mean, what this is all, um, I think every time we can have an example, like what Kathy was just mentioning and before, um, let's, let's take notes on that because we're going to come across it again and, and wanna be able to justify it with when it would've had an impact. We don't just wanna have words in here for the sake of words.
Good idea, Rebecca.
Okay. Um, are we ready to move on? How are we doing on time?
We, we have, uh, I, I have about, uh, 23 minutes or so before I have to go.
Okay. Do you wanna just move down to the next?
Oh, sure, sure.
I'm gonna skip from the landscaping. It wasn't anything. So if we're going to go down to section 6.5, um, which is coordination of roads, parking, loading, recreation and safety. Um, I mean, I was just playing around with the heading. That doesn't have a lot of meaning, meaning right now, but by adding in building accessibility, it, um, kinda drives at why we're suggesting a lot of these amendments to make the connection between where the vehicles are in the building, where people wanna be, um, safer. Um, so one of the goals of doing the amendments was to integrate our complete streets policy, because as a policy, um, there are actual, um, specific design requirements in it. Um, we, we have goals in it and we refer to a lot of different federal and similar, um, guidance on how to implement a complete streets policy. Um, but when you're doing your, your site plan review, um, I don't think that it's, it's being mentioned on private projects, but on our CSO, public projects, we're applying it. So this, by adding it to the site plan review regulations, um, more specifically, um, helps to have both the public and private sector implementing the complete streets. Um, so a lot of this language that is added under 6.5, specifically under design standards, is to provide, um, the industry references for what complete streets, um, are. We don't wanna rewrite what is already written.
Do you wanna add a, a not in the second line, but not limited to?
Uh, okay. So where are, the second line, including but not limited, right? Thank you, Kathy.
And then the next three or four, what are points? Should they be letters rather than numbers since?
Yes, we.
Had a little outline point.
Change bullets, update bullets. Okay. Um, so obviously, um, we're going to have the complete streets policy as a reference. Um, one of the, um, master plan and related, um, work plan goals for the city planning department is to have an ADA plan, an accessibility plan. We already, um, use those standards in the actual building and that construction. But when it comes to like, you know, the new greenway path between the Alice Peck Day parking lot and the Mascoma Greenway, they had followed the ADA standard. So if you're gonna have a connection on your property to something else, to follow that standard. Um. The next one, universal design best practices. Uh, that one's a bit more on the, the leading edge, but Portsmouth, for example, has, um, started to adopt that. It, it, it goes beyond ADA, it tries to consider, um, like mobility or, um, age-related, um, design and, and making colors. Like if you're gonna have a crosswalk in a parking lot, um, uh, you know, road park, road crossings are pretty standard, black and white. But like in a parking lot, you want any pedestrian facilities to be really contrasting so that it jumps out to people with maybe, um, some visual impairment. Um, then the next one is the latest and greatest in bike, um, facility designs, um, that ties together a lot of different pieces that were mentioned in the complete streets policy. But when that was done in 2017, this 2019 guide wasn't available yet. And then the fifth one is, um, another very commonly referenced. Sorry?
Can you move the page up?
Oh, yes, yes.
Can't see on three.
Um, oops. Can you see?
Just three.
See now?
No.
No?
There.
Can you see number three?
No, I can't see them. Yeah.
Okay. So the next one, number five, um, is FHWA, small town and rural multimodal networks. And that is a great reference for us because we are a small city. We don't, um, necessarily have room or right of way for sidewalks on both sides of the, of the street and every street, even when we rehabilitate roads. So, um, that reference helps to design, um, connections to private developments and also public, um, facilities to meet smaller communities.
Rebecca, what are modal zones?
Um, where are?
Number three, contrasting color delineation of modal zones.
Yeah. So like bike, pedestrian, um.
It's modes of travel.
So you mean bike zone, define bike zones and?
They, they could say, um, pedestrian. Bike and other zones.
Thank you.
Board.
What?
Skateboard.
Yeah, I'm not going to get into all of them. We could, we can probably wordsmith that a little. Um, okay. So in terms of having references, there are a lot of others, like I, I mentioned, and that's why it's including but not limited to, those are the minimum that we would recommend them citing in their, um, their drawings or designs. And some of this too may be more applicable to subdivisions, but it's worth having in here for now, for your consideration. Any questions before I move on?
Go for it.
Okay. So some more references just for signage. Um, you see, we see a lot of, um, private developments doing their own thing with signage and uniformity helps, um, because at a glance, anyone can tell what it is if they're already familiar with it. So we just refer to, um, what that standard is. Um, then roads, um, I, I have my own note in here, asking if it's more appropriate for subdivision regulations, um, but at the same time, and I'll get back to the footnote. Um. For internal roadways, except for where it's required for truck, fire or service routes, we're trying to be efficient with, um, land use and we don't, um, necessarily see the need for very wide roadways. And the reason why you don't want wide roadways where possible is because the more pavement, the faster people will tend to go. It's been proven with data that narrower roads encourage drivers to go more slowly because they, you know, they don't wanna hit the curb or things like that. It's, if they're, um, separate pedestrian dedicated facilities as well, then there's even less reason to have wide roads. But the main thing is to slow vehicles down on a site.
Can you move that up again?
Oh, sure. Yep. Um, the same idea goes for, um, you know, if you're making a, um, turn in an intersection, if it's a, um, really big turning radius that they give you, you can cut it going at a high speed. So the geometry of a, a turn on a, in a site where they have, um, vehicles that it, where it's more like a internal roadway, um, it's saying how, what the best practice is for the geometry. Um.
Can you took, can you clarify what you mean by travel lanes of an internal street being not more than 10 feet wide?
Also, a travel lane in general is the space between, on a regular road is the space between the white fog line and then the center median. Um, that is the space that is striped for a vehicle to be. Anything beyond that, eh, like on the shoulder, that is not part of the travel lane.
So there would still be two lanes? So you would have?
Yeah, right. Exactly. Right, right. Um, again, this could go either way with including in site plan or subdivision, but if you have a big shopping plaza that is developed or redeveloped, this, this could apply. It would all be on one parcel, so.
I was at first thinking of it as a one-way street, and if you only had 10 feet.
Yeah, I know.
And if that was not disabled, nobody would be able to get over them.
Okay.
So I guess this would exclude one-way streets.
Right. Well, you could have a one-way street that was just 10 feet wide. It would just be a one-way street.
But then you wouldn't be able to, that, you wouldn't be able to get around a car that was disabled on that street.
Um, oh, well, on an internal roadway though, these are not actual public roads. These are like on a, um, this is like the center road going down the center of a parking plaza between the parking, um, areas. Or like, um, you know, a, a river park development. This, this is not a public road.
This, um, this is David. This, that might be an instance where the fire code is gonna expect something wider than 10 feet.
When it's, it does say, except for where otherwise required. So if that, that's the only means of ingress and egress, then it would probably require something else. But most of the developments we're seeing have a separate fire service route. I don't know. Um, it's all up for discussion.
Joan here.
Hey, Joan.
I'm thinking that using Kathy's example of, you know, if there's a disabled vehicle, well, I suspect that, uh, the owners of, whether it's a shopping area or a, a business or a, a, you know, a, a large living place, I suspect that the owners of that place would wanna have that dealt with ASAP. And that, that is something w- that, that, that we don't necessarily have any jurisdiction over. I mean, like when you enter the plot, when you enter, say, the, the plaza where, uh, Coles is, yes, it's designed by our standards, but when you basically enter the plaza, you're on private property. So if they come across a car that's been disabled, it's up to them. It's in their own best interest to take it care, take it, get it taken care of right away.
Well, the one, another way maybe to think about it is if, if it's a one-way street and a car's broken down and you're saying that another vehicle would have to get around it, then you're gonna need a 20-foot wide internal roadway at minimum. And I don't think that that's the desired, um, result either. If that's only for that one time, a disabled vehicle is, is ever there.
Well, 20 is probably pushing it because I think there are a whole lot of country roads in Vermont and New Hampshire that aren't 20 feet wide and people manage to get by each other, but you know, they're more than 10 feet. That, it was just, you know, I, when I just read, may not be more than, I'm just, was just thinking, well, then they can't be 11 feet, for example, and.
Maybe this should be a should. I'll just, how about I'll put a comment and ask if it's. Okay. Um, well, just to keep things moving.
Well, Rebecca, I'm thinking, and David, I, I'd like your input here since we're about, well, for me, about seven minutes or so since I have to leave. I wonder if we should spend a couple minutes. I wonder if we should spend a couple of minutes maybe talking about future meetings. And I, I'm kind of wondering if maybe, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I really like that we're taking a very deliberative process. I think these, these regulations are very important. We don't want to make recommendations, you know, without really giving it due thought. But I do wonder if maybe, I think David, you may have suggested this or Rebecca last time, if I wonder if maybe we should maybe for each meeting have a set number of ones we're going to review and each board member, maybe 24 hours before the meeting or something like that, submit their thoughts on each potential change to the staff that might accelerate our conversations. Anyway, I, I can open up to the floor, but I'm wondering if we should have a discussion about, again, because we, it might take us a very, very long time if we continue as we're going.
But do we get copies of the proposed changes before today's meeting?
I, I believe we got an email from them about, what, a month, six weeks ago?
Yeah, the language hasn't changed except for the ones that we've already like added a space or corrected a typo.
Of course, they could always be sent again.
We can send it again.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, so we can, we can resend the draft language so that you've all got it. I think one of the benefits of the subcommittee is, is not just submitting your individual thoughts to staff, but having the conversation among yourselves so that each of, each of you hears what the other's thoughts might be and it changes your mind or it changes the other person's mind and things like that. So I, I very much appreciate the, the, the interest and desire to, to, to be able to get through this in a, in a reasonable fashion, but that's part of, I think part of the benefit of the subcommittee is, is to have those conversations. And I don't know how, if we just got individual comments from each of you, I'm not sure how, what, what the benefit, we might be missing out on, on some of the potential benefit there.
Yeah.
I do think if we had homework, like if we were told page two to page seven is what we're going to try and concentrate on next time, we could spend some time, even without comments, reviewing them to jot down our questions, maybe.
Yeah, we should be able to do that and we can have.
I think that's what Matt was suggesting.
Yeah.
That I think is, is a good idea so that everybody's up to speed on what we're going to talk about and isn't really seeing it for the first time when we, when Rebecca shares her screen.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea too. And to your point, David, I don't think if, if I would have received it in advance or looked at it when it was sent out previously, you know, a few weeks ago, that I would have understood, again, the question that I asked about the parking lot at TJ Maxx. I wouldn't have understood what the, you know, what Rebecca's wording was describing without the picture. So it wouldn't have done me really too much good, I don't think, to have come up with a question to ask you because I'm not sure that I could have explained it until we saw the picture.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the idea that Kathy and Matt suggested there, that for the next meeting, prior to the next meeting, we will send out sort of a, a summary of the sections that we hope to be able to get through in that meeting so that you can have reviewed them and we will send out the language again and so that you can have read that. And maybe we'll be able to get through more in that process than otherwise. So that, I think that's a good idea that we can, we can build into the next meeting.
Thank you.
Joan here.
Hey, Joan.
Having been on, on others of this type of committee, I have to say that it, it's not a fast process. And on the other hand, it is a wonderful way of learning the regulations and, and understanding what their intent is. So it's, I don't see that, I honestly don't see how it can be made much faster, but considering this is what sort of the process that my, the Classics Road Subcommittee was, it was to scout out and talk to butters and owners and look through all the records and then do all that legwork so that when it was presented to the council, we had already figured out the questions and the answers. And so that's kind of what we're doing here and it's not a process that can be speeded up really well. If you want to do a really thorough job, I mean, a lot of us are getting educated as we go through this. So I'm sorry that I don't see the ways to really speed it up a lot.
Yeah.
I think, this is Matt, I think those points are all good. I think Kathy's suggestion, which was kind of, I was thinking myself, just having, as David said, having expected parameters for each meeting might be helpful.
Okay.
Joan here, yes.
So I have 1:54 on my computer screen and I know Matt needs to leave. If I may suggest that you talk for a moment or two about the minutes of the last meeting and if there's edits that should be made, other than the header on the second page, let me know and go ahead and, and consider approving those and then. And then we can adjourn for the day.
Yeah, David, do you want the changes now or are you asking for us to send them to you?
If it's typos and things, you can send those to me. If it's something substantive that the, the committee should be deciding, then let's have, have that conversation.
Yeah, here, here's the only thing I have and that is, it said, it said that I was present and I wasn't present until 12:30. So I don't know, you know, we, we talked about Matt leaving early. I don't know if we need to say that Tom joined the meeting late.
Um, I think that's sort of just how it gets done. I did say you joined the meeting at 12:40.
Well, it was just in the first part where it said members present and so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And I have a quick question about minutes from the last meeting.
Yes.
I'm feeling like I'm, I'm missing things somehow or other. Am I not getting them? I don't remember seeing them.
Uh, they are.
I didn't review them.
They were attached to the agenda on the, on the website. I, I apologize, I don't know the, the answer as to whether they were sent individually or if they are just linked to the agenda through the agenda center on the webpage.
I think they were just linked.
I, I think that, I know I got them, but I don't think there was like a separate email that said, here are the minutes of the meeting. I think they were attached to some other email that I got that was about this meeting.
Well, I didn't search for them, so I haven't seen.
All right. So maybe it's appropriate to just pass on them and we'll take them up at the next meeting. And that way, that'll give you another moment to, to review them.
Yeah, that sounds good. Maybe we can approve minutes at the beginning of the next meeting. I have to run, so goodbye all, have a lovely weekend.
Thank you, Matt.
You too.
Thanks, Matt.
Enjoy the snow.
Yeah.
At least it's not raining yet. It's beautiful.
Yeah.
So it's 1:57. Again, I appreciate your time this afternoon. Do you want, so again, Rebecca and I will coordinate on, on sort of identifying specific sections to go over for the next meeting, make sure you're aware of those in advance.
And you're going to resend, you're going to resend the changes.
We will resend the complete set of changes and we will make sure that you have an opportunity to see the minutes before we ask you to approve them.
I, oh, go ahead, David.
I was just gonna see if, if there's a, if anyone has a motion to adjourn, but if there's something else to talk about.
Yeah, I, I just had one question, if you don't mind.
Nope.
I, I believe Matt is comfortable with this, but so in the version that I'm sending, there are comments I've made from the last meeting and this meeting through the Word Comment Tool. Are you all comfortable with that or do you want a clean copy that only shows the changes and not any of the comments from these meetings?
I'm on Joan here. I'm okay with seeing the comments.
Yeah, me too. This is Tom.
It's, it's like an addendum to the minutes essentially.
That's fine.
Okay.
I, I had, I'll set, Rebecca?
Yep.
I had one quick comment. I, I just wanted to stress that doing our meetings in this format is, is definitely slowing us down because we've not done this before. Those, those of us who are used to getting paper copies of everything, it's just, I just want to stress that, that people like my husband who does software writing is completely comfortable with doing 750 things at the same time on his computer, talking to different people all over the world. He's just very adept at it, but I'm all thumbs. And so I, I think others on our boards and others, I think all of us have very different levels of ability from super quick and easy with it to me stumbling along and getting tremendously frustrated. So I just, just wanted to say that, that, that also is slowing us down and it's just something that time will help us get better and faster.
Well, it better because I think we're going to be doing it for a while.
A long time.
Practice makes perfect.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Monroe?
Monroe votes yes.
Ms. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Martz?
I vote yes. However, I would like to add, thank you, David, to you and Tim and Rebecca for what you're doing downtown. So as Matt started off the meeting, I'd like to end it with that comment.
Thank you very much.
We need another motion to sec, to second Tom's motion. Just kidding. Yes, I agree.
I think the vote on the motion was unanimous and so I think you are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for agreeing with us.
Have a great weekend.
Okay, stay warm.
Send pictures of snowmen.
No.